Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you and call the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order.
Also like to call to order the special meeting on the Board of Finance.
And please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to round two of our annual budget hearings. We're gonna have a slight schedule change tonight. The town clerk's office will go first, switched with Social Services because of a schedule conflict. So I'd like to welcome Town Clerk Lisa Bird.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Lisa.
How are you? Okay. Excuse my voice. You all have in front of you my presentations, my attachments. We're just gonna keep it quick and to the point. My office expense increased. Last year I did an overrun and that was due to the fact that I had a lot of printing. And I've noticed that although I want to use a local company, their fees have increased greatly. And I was actually shocked when the bills came in, so I'm gonna be researching a more cost-effective printer. Also, the ballot, the cost for the postage went up, so I had a total overrun, I believe it was like, what, a thousand? Over a thousand dollars.
A thousand, even.
Thousand, yeah. And then, and that is attributed to both the postage and the, um, the printing of envelopes and business cards, et cetera. So that was that.
So the volume was the same, just the cost for?
Uh, for the postage, um...
For your mailing.
Printing.
Printing, uh, yeah, it's the same volume, but I noticed the prices had increased. You know, it was three hundred dollars for, you know, a thousand envelopes, something like that. It was too, way too much money. So I know if I researched it and did it a little better, that we just always went with the local companies and it needed to be researched a little bit more on my end. So, um, but the other thing was the postage as well. It was twenty-six hundred dollars here. Pitney Bowes, my postage account, was two thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars. That is also attributed to the land records. We're getting loaded with sales of properties in town. It's just nonstop. And our normal slow period has been outrageous. Normally during the holidays, it slows down. So, you know, we mail back all the land record documents to the originator, so. The other thing was the election expense. For 2018-19, we used ninety-six point one percent of our allotted funding. The last presidential, and we had cut that down for the last few years, but the presidential election expense account for 2016 was at twenty-five thousand. This account must be funded regardless of request and we need to have enough money there for sending out the absentee ballots, which are sixty-five cents per ballot. And we did over eight hundred ballots for presidential election. So not all of those were mailed, but a good portion of them overseas, et cetera. So all that adds up. So I would feel comfortable bringing it to twenty-five. We have to order ballots at a hundred percent for every voter in town. It's mandated by the Secretary of State's office. So that everybody is allotted a ballot, who's registered to vote, that we don't run. The dues and education account, um...
Can I just ask a question?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
So, um, under election expense in the system, it says twenty thousand five hundred. Is that what she meant?
That's what I had this year.
And then proposed is twenty-five thousand.
Proposed is, yeah, twenty, it's four and a half, right? Four and a half thousand.
Yeah, forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred, yes. And that's what we funded in 2016 as well.
Lisa, you don't have a choice of printers for ballots, do you?
No, we do not. It's state, well, there's a choice between two. They're both comparable in price. And actually, Atkins was a state of Connecticut business and I had problems with them with the formatting of the ballots in the past. We don't take any chances when it comes to elections, so. And I've had no problems with LHS, who is the manufacturer of the actual voting machines, so my confidence is with them.
Lisa, I just want to confirm that forty-five hundred was what you spent in 2016 extra? Was the same amount?
It's, my funding for 2016 year in elections was twenty-five thousand.
Okay, so it's the same.
Yeah, we also have, that also covers referenda, any referenda, budget referenda, how many times we're gonna go, if we're voting on anything else.
Okay.
Presidential primaries, all that stuff.
Right, we have all that stuff coming.
Yeah, so. Dues and education, I have a new assistant town clerk. She's not state certified, so I had to raise that account to allow for classes to be held. She goes for twice a year. So that was a small increase there. The one thing that I'm gonna bring up, and I brought it up last year as well, was the train station. I researched increasing the funding, like Delaney had said, you were looking into that as well. I contacted the Department of Transportation, Department of Rail, and I was told that a proposal could be drawn up for increasing the per hour rate and then submitted to the Board of Selectmen and then they would vote on it or whatever. It would be a process. And I did, I polled some towns. Bethel is currently at twenty-five cents an hour, which equals three dollars for a twelve-hour period. Surrounding towns, Danbury is twenty-five cents per fifteen minutes. Greenwich is five dollars a day. Ruwetan is seven. Fairfield is six. New Britton is twenty-five cents per ten minutes. So, you know, it's been twenty-five cents an hour for quite a long time. So I think that's something that we should be looking into.
Are there costs to change the meter?
We have a new kiosk. And the kiosk, that brings me to my other point. In October of 2017, prior to the expansion of the train station lot, Doug Art was the Public Works Director. And he kind of fell asleep at the wheel. We didn't order the kiosk until late and then kind of dropped the ball. And I'm not trying to throw him under the bus, this is just fact. Problem is that it needed a six-week lead time. I wound up kind of stepping in because I had the lot gonna be expanded and I had no way for people to pay daily. So as part of that, I told him, I said, "I'm just gonna take it over." But what turned out to be getting the kiosk installed, they needed the lead time, striping the lots, et cetera. A lot of stuff had to be done. With that came the responsibilities that I have to now manage this kiosk. I don't have a problem doing it, but as part of the lease with the state of Connecticut and Department of Rail, back at, signed by Cliff Hergen and the Department, the Commissioner of the Department of Transportation, under section three, it specifically states that allowable expenses to be compensated among other items is administrative management. And I say that with, and I'm going to explain to you that what I do on a daily basis with this train station. I have a web-based program. It's a solar program. The kiosk is solar managed. Daily monitoring of parking kiosk operations. I go online every day and make sure that there's no declines on that, the machine's working properly, that there's no issues. I field parking inquiries and complaints on a regular basis, by phone and in person. Service calls. If there's a problem with the meter, the meter's frozen or it's not, um, not on Wi-Fi. I have to call California and speak to their help desk. I'm the enforcement and ticket liaison to the Bethel Police Department. So if there's somebody down there that's been getting tickets, they call me. They wanna make sure that, you know, what's going on. They can, they can actually log into the system and see about how many times this person's been violation. And then they'll, they'll ask me about the transaction, so I can see all the transactions online. I'm the maintenance liaison also for the service of the kiosk. So I can go on and see that the coin box is ninety-three percent full and it needs to be changed out. So then I would call Public Works and he'd go down there and empty the coin box and also run diagnostic tests on it. We change the paper for receipts. Once the receipt paper runs out, there's no receipts, it stops functioning. So I've actually gone down there onsite to correct the issues myself. I put the cards in, I get on the phone with the IP, IP group, which is out of California. They talk me through fixing things. It's kind of ironed itself out now where I refer to Greg Rux, who's in public building maintenance. I've had paper and car jamming, people calling me that their credit card's stuck. So it's endless and it's a, it's a pretty much a full-time job. I polled all the town clerks in the state. I'm the only town clerk that handles Metro North parking. Most of them either have a parking authority or it's handled in different ways. I don't mind doing it. I have no problem. I'm experienced at it. But I'm asking for compensation from the leasing account, the leased, um, from the lease, which is specifically states in that section that administrative duties are to be compensated from or can be compensated from the, the funding at the train station.
Does that also apply to annual permits?
The annual permits, we've always done and that's not...
But do you compensate for that?
That we don't know. That is part of our, our job. I don't have a problem doing that and that's what my staff and I do on a regular basis every year.
And that regulation doesn't allow you?
I honestly don't think it's, it needs to be compensated. That's something that came with the job. This is all new as of October 2017.
This is new responsibility, right?
New responsibilities. I also have the ability to go on and refund, charge card, I mean, I could refund their credit cards, basically, if they've pressed a button and if they paid for sixteen hours and it's only meant for three hours. I can do all that from the web-based program. I have to order supplies, papers. I just talked to them. Our cards expired, maintenance cards, and we can't operate it right now, so I put in a work order and then they're gonna come back with an invoice to me. So these are all duties that are in addition to the regular job.
What do you estimate in terms of your time per week?
I worked, I mean, it's, it's an hour a day, you know, or, but it varies. I mean, if it's, if there's a problem down there, you call, the phones are coming in on average. Well, I'll tell you, I was, I did an estimate and I was asking for four to five thousand, somewhere between that annually. And that works out to be, I think, seventy dollars a week, seventy-six dollars a week.
And Lisa, where does the money go that you collect? In the general fund?
No.
It's in a separate account. It's gotta be maintained in a separate account for the parking lot fund. The state can come in and take fifty percent of that account at any time.
But Lisa's saying part of the contract, we can take administration.
But that money is used only for maintaining the train station.
It's enterprise.
And so how much?
Well, not even that. I mean, it's a separate, you know, margin account.
How much revenue did that generate last year?
Well, just for the annual permits, it was about sixty-eight thousand dollars.
But for the, for the coin?
The coin, I'm averaging, this past year, monthly, it was about two thousand dollars.
So about twenty-four thousand dollars for the year?
Approximately. I don't have, that money goes into another account. I just see on my, on my electronic version.
So do we know about what the number is?
I'm sorry?
Do, do we know about what the number is of the revenue that was generated from the kiosk parking?
The amount that's in the account is substantial. It's over three hundred thousand at this point.
But it specifically states that it could only be used for upgrades, maintenance, salting of the, you know, changing the lights, the, um...
Security.
Security, the plowing, all, the only thing in that contract or that lease states that they can only be used for the benefit of that train station, so.
But Lisa, if there's three hundred thousand in that account, why are we trying to raise the fees? We want people to use mass transit. If there's that much money in there, why, why do you think we should be raising the rate?
The, well, I mean, honestly, it's a, it's a, I mean, if you compare it to other...
Well, I don't, and I think that's a good thing that we're lower and we have three hundred thousand in savings, I mean, you know.
Well, it's not allowed.
That's not all ours, though. It can go away.
The point is that it doesn't go into our general fund.
Correct.
Who oversees the account? Who manages the account?
We do.
Okay, so it's not really a Board of Finance issue, it's gonna be...
No, it's not the budget.
Well, just when they did the expansion, we had to pay money to do the piping, right? Yeah, so that was a good chunk of money as well.
And there was a section that was, one of the drains was on our road and we didn't, we, the town, paid for the road because it wasn't part of the town, um, train station and our property.
And by, when you say "we" do the town, specifically you, the Board of Selectmen?
In that case, it happened to be a utility.
No, no, I'm sorry. Who manages the kiosk account?
Well, Lisa sends it upstairs and we have it in a separate account.
So can Lisa sign off on her own raise then?
No.
Who would have to sign off?
You do.
No, it's not.
No, what it is, is she's an elected official, so you would have to increase.
No, but this is not...
And then we get allocated, added out of account.
Let me, let me provide some clarity there, 'cause I spoke to the town attorney about this. First of all, I believe Lisa's request is fully justified. This is a new job responsibility. So the Board of Finance has control over her salary, just like, you know, mine and the registrar's. So no matter what the source of the funds are, you still have to approve her salary. Now, the fact is, whatever you, whatever compensation you give here can be pulled out of that account to cover administrative costs. So it's like a pass-through.
But you need a green light from us, basically.
Yes.
And that makes sense, 'cause it won't skew what we see as her salary. It'll just be, I understand.
Correct.
Just coming out of a different account.
Correct, right. It reimburses.
Sure.
But, but her salary is still under your purview. That's according to the charter.
So you're asking for the forty-five hundred or five thousand to be on your salary or to be in your department?
She wants to be compensated from that. It's my sole, my sole responsibility.
So my point in asking the amount of time is to make sure that we're right placing the work effort. Because if you're taking an hour a week away from job, work that you had done previously, then, you know, instead of eight hours of being the town clerk for all the other items, now you're being seven hours. And so even if you're compensated for that, is that an inappropriate use of your, of your time?
Absolutely, absolutely appropriate use, yeah.
That's probably one of the best things that's happened with the train station.
You know, I'm one for a challenge and, you know, I never shy away from doing work. It's just one of those things that it kind of fell in my lap. I took charge because I was frustrated and angry that it wasn't getting done. And at that point, I think I do a great job doing it and, yeah, no.
And my question had nothing to do with competency.
No, no, I know, I know. Um, I can't put a number on how many hours because it's daily. It's, you know, I could get a call at five, at eight AM saying, "I parked, I didn't put money in the meter, it wouldn't work. I can't, I'm not gonna get a ticket." Then I call the, the police officer and I tell him, "Don't ticket this so-and-so car." So it's, it's a constant daily thing, but I can't put a specific hour a day on it. It could be an hour on a Friday morning, but it, you know, on Thursday, I couldn't, I won't get a call, but I go online every day and check that account.
I think a fair way of asking it is just, do you feel comfortable performing both functions? I mean, you, you obviously do a great job being the town clerk. I mean, seems to run over.
I do.
You're able to handle both without a detriment to your clerk duties?
No, I, yeah, no, that's not a problem.
If I can, I can add to that. Prior to this kind of evolving, the way it fell into, into Lisa's office, for many years, there was a lot of confusion. There wasn't any one person in charge of, I'm gonna call it customer service. So people didn't know if they, if the meter wasn't working, they might call the police department, they might call Public Works, they might call my office. It wasn't very clear. Since we put the kiosk in and Lisa supervised that whole installation, that whole function is now gravitated into her office and it's been a tremendous help. And as a matter of fact, I think...
Our phone number's on the board.
That's right. And I think that since we put the kiosk in, the daily parking revenues have shot up, way up too.
Way up.
Because the meters were, they would freeze, they would run out of batteries, they, you know, they would malfunction. The police that were, the police didn't even want to give parking tickets because so often it was a meter problem. And now we, you know, that's all been set aside. So Lisa is doing a very good job and it's been a positive thing for the commuters that park regularly in the lot.
And Lisa, you know, I think to next point, we don't wanna outprice ourselves, like, you know, we don't want people to not park there. We do want them to take mass transit, but charging a quarter of what the surrounding towns are charging, they would charge half of what the surrounding...
See, I'm happy with twenty-five cents an hour because people won't be coming and complaining to me, so that's fine. I mean, I just know that you brought that point up last year and it is true that we are lower than any other surrounding train station.
Do you have a sense for whose parking there Lisa's, mostly Bethel?
Yes, Newtown, Southbury, Redding. Well, Redding has their own, but they're, yeah. It's mostly out-of-towners, a lot of out-of-towners. But then we do have a good portion of the annual permits are there parking, you know, from Bethel as well. It's a, it's a big mix and there's no restriction on residency there, so.
And the parking lot's not full either, so there's quite a...
We expanded the daily, it was actually, we're running out of spaces. We went from forty-four to seventy now. So the whole perimeter of the lot is daily parking and it was needed.
The total is something like three hundred and forty, something?
Yep, yep.
And that was not quite doubled from what it was before. There used to be a waiting list for annual permits in the range of seventy to a hundred people that were waiting. And that waiting list has been cleared, but, but because we have the space in the lot now, there are more daily parkers coming in and just using the credit card in the kiosk and that is filling out.
And they also have an app, Parks Water app, which is a huge success. And I see every day that more, more people are using it. And I have a couple people this week go to the city and say, you know, "What if I, I run out and use your app? You can pay remotely." So it's, it's really moved us forward in, in terms of what we offer the community.
I don't have a problem raising the fees, 'cause anytime you can have people come into town, they go to the liquor store, the dry cleaner on the way out of town. So, you know, let's not price ourselves out, but let's pay the bills.
Well, I was looking to compensate for the offset.
For your salary, I got that, I got that.
Well, what I was just thinking is, is there a difference between the annual permit? Can you get an annual permit as a non-Bethel resident?
Yes.
So, is there any difference in the annual fee?
Two hundred and fifty dollars annually. We provided twenty-one dollars down a month, so it's actually, it's very reasonable.
No, I mean, for out-of, non-Bethel residents?
Everybody can get that.
No, because as part of the lease, we cannot discriminate, you know.
All right.
Discriminate, well.
If we, if we can tap the fund for this purpose, can we tap the fund for the other percentage points, up to fifty percent?
Only for maintenance.
For, for...
Well, the services that we perform under parking.
Right.
It's all pulled from that account.
We could, just like with the old train station, we could do the same thing for plowing and all.
And do we do that?
No, we don't. I mean, they have a separate, um, maintenance crew that comes through to plow and we pay that separately out of that account. It's not on the town's.
Yeah, that's a contractor, right?
That's a contractor.
Yeah, and that contractor is paid from the train station account.
That's right, yeah.
So, I'm just wondering if there's a hundred and fifty thousand? You said fifty percent of it is what can be taken out, leaving, and if it's at almost three hundred thousand, so let's just round to one fifty.
Well, it's, they can take fifty percent.
Of the account balance.
It's sort of, it's sort of like when the medieval taxman came to knock on the door, whatever you have that day, they'll take, they'll take half of it. If you had fifty thousand in the bank, they'll take twenty-five. If you had three hundred, they'll take one fifty. So it's kind of hard to predict.
Suggests we should be taking fifty percent out now. Yeah, but you like can take out what, a lot of paid for the...
When we renovated the, the parking area, I mean, that was all paid from the fund.
Yeah.
So I guess the question is, are there any expenses that the town is paying that we could otherwise allocate or pay for out of that fund?
No.
No.
Doesn't, that fund, doesn't that cover the things that if there are repairs done, that the town has to pay?
I guess if there was like a change of light, maintenance like that. When our guys are going down there to do that type of work, then we would have to have a work order system that would identify exactly the work being done at the train stations.
Who has that agreement? I'd like to see that, just give it up.
I have a copy.
It's with you too.
I, I sent you one last year. I mailed it to your house.
The lease?
Yep.
It'll be in my town clerk file.
It's next to the garbage can, Bob, is it?
No.
I just might suggest that maybe we put this on the agenda for our next meeting and discuss train stations.
Yeah.
No, no offense, just we're, the people waiting to go.
No, I'm taking more time than I thought I would.
Well, it's a, it's a bigger topic.
Yeah, big topic, yeah, with a lot, a lot of options.
Okay. Thanks, Lisa.
All right, thank you, Lisa. All right, next, I see it's, we've got one presentation. We've blown up the schedule already.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's, no, you got it. You are so conscientious.
Well, Megan kinda insisted. No, she was so nice, so you let me go first.
And the health department director's caught you right now.
Oh, my God.
All right, next, I'd like to welcome Lisa Plum, Senior Center Director, Department number four thirty.
I hand out first?
One, two, how are you?
What's that? Right, can you go?
Good break.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Color.
Huh?
Color.
Color down.
Ooh.
You're not being funny.
Flash. We can do like a question. Good. I'll take that one, please, for the app.
There's two.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's have a vote. I think you get voted off.
Okay. Yeah, you'd be aware of it. I'm restarting. Okay, Lisa.
Okay, hello, everyone.
Hello.
I thought showing a brief PowerPoint presentation would give you a better understanding of what the Senior Center is all about. Throughout the Senior Center, we pride ourselves on making the Senior Center look updated and modern. When the Stony Hillin was closing, I approached the Rubino family, asking if they would be willing to donate chairs to the Senior Center. The rose chairs you see were a gift from them. We received a total of twelve. The Senior Center is a safe place where people can sit alone or gather with friends. I'm extremely proud of the work we've done and the improvements we've made over the past few years at little or no cost to the town, such as the library, where a group of engineers from a Bethel company volunteered their time to renovate our library, including paint and carpeting, cabinets and tile work. They purchased the bookshelves, computer station, sink, and installed all. In the new library, Kevin Clary is volunteering his time tracing family histories in a genealogy class and has found out amazing information about our members. One lady located a long-lost sister and another gentleman located his biological father. But that's another story for another day. The Senior Center offers a variety of programs, over forty programs a week, to meet the growing needs of people in our community fifty years and older. Last year, we had eighty to a hundred people daily, amounting to a total of twenty thousand three hundred and ninety-two members participating in programs at the Senior Center. The number of people aged sixty-five and older in the United States has grown rapidly over most of the twentieth century, from three million in nineteen hundred to thirty-five million in two thousand. In 2018, there were fifty-two million people aged sixty-five and older, according to the Census Bureau. By 2030, all baby boomers will be older than the age of sixty-five. The Senior Center is both an active and a busy place and will continue to grow as the aging population is growing. As this chart indicates, our new memberships have increased two hundred and twenty-one percent over the past four years. By 2034, there will be seventy-seven million people sixty-five years and older, compared to seventy-six million under the age of eighteen. The 2030s are projected to be a transformative decade for the US population. Our exercise programs include circuit training, chair yoga, yoga, zumba, country dance and line dance, balance class, Broadway burn, Tai Chi, and total wellness. All of our instructors are certified and insured, our requirement upon hire. Members visit the Senior Center, especially those living alone, to socialize with peers, engage in safe activities and healthy senior programs. They visit for companionship and friendship and to participate in a wide variety of programs. Besides all of the wonderful programs, including health, fitness and wellness programs, the Senior Center gives information and assistance on senior-related issues such as Medicare, Medicaid, housing, employment, counseling, volunteer and civic opportunities, social recreation and education. The Senior Center serves as a gateway connecting older adults to vital community services that can help them stay healthy and independent. Research shows that older adults who participate in Senior Center programs can learn to manage and delay the onset of chronic illness and experience measurable improvements in their physical, social, spiritual, emotional, mental and economic wellbeing. Approximately seventy percent of Senior Center participants are women. Half of them live alone. The majority are Caucasian, followed by African-American, Hispanic and Asians respectively. Compared with, compared with their peers, Senior Center... Compared with their peers, Senior Center participants have higher levels of health, of social interaction, and life satisfaction. Excuse me, the average age of participants is seventy-five. Seventy-five particip- seventy-five percent of participants visit the center one to three times per week. They spend an average of three point three hours per visit. Dr. Karen Kovacs leads one of our craft programs called Dresses for Missions. The program started three years ago after a conversation with one of our members who was giving money to a children's charity overseas. She participated for thirty years and corresponded with different families throughout the years. Recently, she received a letter back from two young girls who she had been supporting, who told her they can no longer correspond with her because their parents sold them. She was horrified to learn the news and looked into the situation. She found out that human traffickers take children that look poor, thinking that the parents won't have enough money to look into the situation. As a result of this ministry, as a result, this ministry was started with the mindset that if the children were dressed nicely, they would be safer. The Bethel Senior Center members have sent over one thousand dresses overseas with the assistance of Walnut Hill Community Church, who deliver the dresses personally. All the materials have been donated. Bob Becker walked into my office one day, and before he left, he was volunteering to teach a Writing Your Memoirs class. The group has published two books with their memoir stories in it. Bob, being a videographer, has captured members' stories of their lives on video and presented it to the members. He is also a songwriter and will also serenade members with his original and inspiring songs. Patrizia is a professor at Westcon. She teaches our Italian class. She's been teaching at the Senior Center for over ten years and brings a group to Italy every year during her Christmas break. Our chorus group, led by Judy Novacek, the former First Selectman, and also former Senior Center Director, sing each week at the Senior Center, filling our hallways with beautiful music. In addition, they visit several nursing homes each year, representing the Bethel Senior Center to enhance the lives of those who reside there. In two thousand and nineteen, after seven years of requesting, the Senior Center was accepted into the Nutrition Cafe, which is a congregate meal program provided by the state of Connecticut. The program has been well-received, giving seniors an opportunity for a well-balanced nutritious meal. Having a warm meal, enjoying the company of family or friends, is of great importance to all of us as human beings, but especially to those who live alone. The Center offers a gift shop, as well as a book, magazine, DVD, and puzzle free loan program. All of these items are donated, as well as the display cases, which were donated by a local business. The Bethel Senior Center van has been a wonderful addition to our program. The van is used Monday through Friday, taking Bethel residents to medical and personal appointments, shopping, recreational trips, and the food pantry. We are constantly receiving calls from community members telling us how much they appreciate this van service. Recently, at a Danbury Hospital Advisory Board meeting, I was very proud, as the members of the board stated, what a great van service we provide. In addition to weekly programs and special events, the Senior Center offers both day and overnight trips, including Broadway shows, dinner theaters, museums, et cetera. Recent trips taken to the Caribbean, Ireland, Budapest, Austria, and Germany. Some of this year's flyers include a trip to Michigan, Virginia and Tennessee, and Lake George. The highlight this year will be our trip to London and Scotland, which is already filled to capacity. I hope you found this presentation interesting, and it gave you a better understanding into what goes on in to your town's Senior Center. The last thing I would like to talk to you about is money. And the needs of our Senior Center. In two thousand and fifteen, I revised the way that money was collected from the Senior Center. As a result of this change in accounting, in two thousand and sixteen, for the first time, thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one was collected from the Senior Center and given to the Finance Department. Over the past four years, a total of a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars was given to the Finance Department to offset a portion of the expenses. In addition to this, in two thousand and seventeen, I made a decision to use a new company to publish our monthly newsletter. I eliminated the cost of an editor and a local printing company that had our business previously. This change allowed us to provide an eight-page, colorful, glossy newsletter with updated features from an online computer program. In addition to having updated features, the newsletter now does not cost the town a cent. The newsletter is free due to the ads placed in the newsletter, and their representative is responsible for getting the ads, not placing a burden on our staff. In addition to this, the company provides profit sharing, and has sent a check the past three years for a total of four thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars. This is a total with the above-mentioned revenue of one hundred and seventy dollars, excuse me, a hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars the past four years that the Senior Center has given to the Board of Finance. In the newsletter that I handed out to you, there's a few charts in the back. One of them has the revenue that the Senior Center has brought in. I am requesting ten thousand dollars this year to be able to offer new programs. Each program costs approximately twenty-five hundred dollars to run. With the new membership increasing, members are looking for new activities. This ten thousand dollars would allow me to offer a minimum of four new activities. These activities would produce revenue and would be self-sustaining. In other words, the money collected from participants would pay for the supplies and/or the instructor's salary. Activities offered would be yoga, zumba, pottery, drawing class, and group personal training. Also in next year's budget, I am requesting three storage cabinets. This will allow us to use one of the art rooms for other programs. Right now, we need to cancel some programs because we just don't have the space to hold them. The cost of the cabinets is five hundred and ten dollars. The next four items are appliances. Both the commercial refrigerator and the commercial freezer are very old, and they've been repaired several times. The repairman stated he's not sure if he can continue to repair it because they're not sure that they can get the parts due to its age. The cost is twelve hundred dollars for a commercial refrigerator and fifteen hundred dollars for a commercial freezer. These appliances are used for our food program, as well as for special events and our emergency shelter when necessary. The last item we are requesting are a washer and a dryer. We take the laundry to our homes to wash and dry it, and believe that this should be done at the Senior Center. The cost is two thousand dollars. I thank you for both your attention and your consideration, and most of all, your support of our Senior Center. Thank you very much.
And Lisa, by the way, that, that was helpful. But you, Eileen, and Rosemary were kind enough to give me a tour of the place. That's really what you gotta see, that's a rocking place. In fact, I got exhausted just watching the people using them.
And I invite everyone down, please, and we'd make time to give you a tour at any time at all that you're available.
It was really eye-opening, very helpful.
Thank you.
This is good, that's even better.
Oh, thank you.
You brought your posse with you, so.
They're wonderful, so thank, I thank them for coming out.
Thank you for coming.
Any questions? We do tablecloths and dish towels, things like that. Yep.
The revenue for the additional programs, how many, how many programs would you anticipate lending?
Excuse me, that would allow me to do four programs, ten thousand dollars, but I'd like to do six programs, and I can do that by not having the program every week, to have it every other week for a couple of the programs, and then I can get away with doing six programs.
So, it would be four per week, but six programs.
Usually, they're weekly programs, but some of them I can do every other week.
Six new programs.
Yes.
And what would be the average attendance, just speculatively, to these programs?
Maybe ten to fifteen.
Ten to fifteen? And so, that would mean?
Well, it depends, some of our programs have, some of our exercise programs have forty people in it. Some of our smaller programs have ten people in it, so it really varies.
Sixty to ninety people, though, would be participating in these programs. And you think that the cost, any participation cost will offset that, that annual cost?
Yes, so I would run the program.
I see.
Yep.
This is like, from last year, you said the same thing, and then we caught ten thousand dollars. So, this is pretty much, you know, you want the ten thousand dollars so you can, you know, fire that up again.
Please.
Yeah. Now, the only thing I was questioning about is the laundry. I want you to do mine, no, okay. Do you know the volume of it? And only because two thousand dollars, I mean, look, I've got a thousand-dollar whirlpool dryer from a woman who was converting to gas, and she sold it to me for a hundred and fifty bucks. So, I'm kind of a scavenger like that. But, if it's not a huge amount of laundry, maybe weekly going to the place next to Rite Aid or something, I mean, there are, it may work out to be less, and I understand the convenience of having it there. I'm just saying that it's, that's something, it's hard for me to...
Wrap your head around.
Yeah.
I'm a good bargain shopper, so it could very well be much less than that.
Okay.
That's also to install it, too.
Yes.
Yes. And if you didn't have it on site, then you have to pay staff to go to the laundromat for an hour.
I'm just asking for some more, you know, details because you don't know.
Lisa, you said it's self-sustaining, you anticipate additional revenue. Give me an idea of our percentage, what do you think?
If you give me ten thousand dollars, I'll give you ten thousand back.
Oh, okay.
At least ten thousand.
At least ten thousand.
What, like two or three dollars, four dollars? Do you intend to go into a program?
Programs are anywhere between two and four dollars for programs.
Per week?
Per class. And some of the, some of that may go up, we are looking at options.
Hey, Lisa, help me out on this, because we're looking at the Open Gov thing, and we're having a problem finding where...
The equipment is in the capital list that we got last night.
Activities, activities is where the ten thousand is for the programs.
So, where is that? Okay, fifty-five to sixty-five.
Fifty-three, seventy-two. I count fifty-three, seventy-two. Slide it over.
Yeah, activities.
The ten thousand dollars would be the only thing in the activities, everything else is out of the capital.
I just want to say thank you, the PowerPoints make such a difference.
Oh, good.
In terms of understanding what's, at least for me, I'm just kind of a visual learner, so it's nice to see those PowerPoints.
Well, thank you, but please come down if you have time to do that, we'd be happy to toy you through.
Excellent presentation.
How about the wait section? Alright, thank you, Lisa.
We have another three hours to go, folks, don't wait.
Hey, we have to see her, so here.
Don't answer that, we always say, don't answer this.
Alright, they would like to, alright, let's, we'll let the, let the room calm down just a little bit. Like to welcome Megan Alworth Pizadian, our excellent social services director. Thank you for being here.
Okay, for those who don't know me, I am Megan Alworth Pizadian, the social worker for the town of Bethel. And for those who don't know me, I have stage fright. So, please bear with me, if I'm speaking too quickly, just ask me to slow down, I'm more than happy to do that. Overall, for the budget for social services, I'm requesting eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars, which is a two percent increase from this fiscal year, which is equivalent to one thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars. There are two areas where I have an increase, two areas I have a decrease, and three unchanged areas. So, start with the increase. The first one is salary, which Fred helped me figure out for the next fiscal year, and that, that is for sixty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine, which covers my salary and this social work assistance staff that covers four hundred and fifty hours of assistance during the busiest times of the year. The other area where I'm requesting an increase is storage and eviction because that has an upward trend, increasing a total of three thousand dollars, which is an increase of seven hundred and fifty dollars from this fiscal year. Currently, for evictions, we have eight pending, eight evictions for this fiscal year. Six of them took place, four of the evictions required storage units, and two of them required hauling away the items and disposing of them. And one of those is pending, and I anticipate that is going to be, that eviction will require hauling and disposal as well. So, the town, for those of you that aren't familiar, the towns, each town and city is responsible for storing items up to fifteen days after eviction. And if the person does not make arrangements with me to regain control of their possessions, then the town has basically stuck with these items and the cost of the storage unit. This year, we have been working with a disposal company, which has been wonderful. We, the transition time from when items are stored to when they're disposed of is quicker than waiting for, I'm sorry, the highway department, who's busy doing their jobs, and it just takes away from, from them. So, and also, it decreases the risk of somebody getting injured on the job and workers comp. So, that's been working very well. They did do one of the hauling because it was a little tiny unit, which was like closet space. I actually helped with that.
So, do we pay them for that, or do they take the things to sell in exchange for their services, or how does that work?
We don't, the highway department just gets paid through, through us. We do pay the hauling company to remove the items and dispose of them, which Bobby Dibble, our highway director, said it costs so much money for us to throw out the items. That, and the, and the turnover rate is quicker, I feel like it's been very successful.
But that, that expense goes into eviction and storage?
Yes, yes.
That's in that?
Yes, eviction, the storage of items and the removal, and then the cost of them to be dumped for the highway department, and then it's all one fee for the disposal companies.
How come it's not the landlord's responsibility or the person doing the evicting? It just seems kind of, you know, puts a town in a, in a situation of liability, especially when after fifteen days.
I agree, a hundred percent. And I did write to our local politicians a year ago, and they said they were gonna look into it. And I wrote back about a month ago, and I haven't heard anything in here. But Mr. Nicky Baker can tell you the history of that since the war, too.
Those, those actually, actually, prior to that, those laws date back to the Great Depression. And some of them are state, some of them are federal. But there, it does strictly mandate, it was almost a punitive thing during the Great Depression against entities that foreclosed on people and took away their possessions. So, the government said, alright, you're gonna be responsible for it. Those laws have not been changed since the nineteen thirties. They've been modified slightly, but what she's telling you is required by law. We would dearly love to not have this cost at all, but it is a requirement.
Do you recall seeing a washer and dryer in any of those?
No.
We did look at the customers last year that sometimes sell, they put the stuff, I mean, can't, can you have a little, you know?
We, Lisa and I did try to do a store to store auction, and nobody came.
Oh, sad.
Oh, that's right.
So, yes, we tried that, nobody came. When there's items in there, like big furniture items, clothes, I've made like fifty trips to the will. I crawled off the streets, they took a big bulk of the furniture. So, if there's something in there, yes, my first priority will be to get them, as long as it happens quickly. Because as nice as I am, as much as I want those things, I just hate having the storage unit to keep paying for it.
Well, no, you don't want to keep paying for it, that's good, yeah.
So, it's like just kind of quick.
Do they try to put these by the month, or do they prorate it?
They, they do prorate it for the, for the town, yeah.
And again, maybe the town should consider buying an actual storage unit, one of the containers.
We talked about that, but it's a liability issue to having the items.
I will take responsibility for that. Megan did propose that about two years ago, and I, I said no. Because we would basically have a railcar type unit sitting out in the back here, where we have insufficient parking. What's that?
You put it at the transfer station, I mean, those units.
I'm gonna throw over it.
It's like a box truck.
Not so much.
Yeah, there'd be.
We've got issues there too, but that's, I'll, we'll talk about that.
And also, we've noticed, I mean, there's really personal information in there. If anyone broke the lock off and got into the unit, it would be, you know, a lawsuit, I'm sure, for the town.
Our, our analysis suggested that logistically and cost-wise, that the best system we have is to turn this over to the outside vendor that she has. Because they're, they can come out on a moment's notice, they can meet the deadlines. You know, you, you can't tell the highway department to go pick stuff up if the marshal's there, and they're in the middle of a snowstorm or they're in the middle of paving. You can't pull them off the job.
Right.
So, this, this has worked out extremely well.
Megan, what's, what's the statutory requirement for storage?
It's that we hold the items for 15 days right after the eviction. So, the marshal serves me a notice or to the selectman's office a, a notice of eviction. I unfortunately have relationships with most of the people that are being evicted, which is a conflict of interest, which is another reason I'd love to have us not involved in it because it's sad. And then, if they do make arrangements with me and make payment within 15 days, then they can regain possession of their, of their items. I do try to get in touch with everybody. The gentleman who's pending, he's aware. And just, sometimes they just don't have the money or anywhere to bring the stuff, you know, so.
So, they have to pay a fee or something to recover their?
They have to pay the entire fee, the, which is the wrong. The storage fees.
The storage fee.
Right, right. And we're not responsible for the marshal fees or moving the items out of the home. At one time, the highway department did move all the items out of the home.
Megan, you, you did mention, you know, if there's any personal items or papers, is this company credible that they destroy the paperwork?
Yes, so they, they have to take everything. And to what our knowledge is, is that they're disposing everything. It's not a company that does.
It's disposed properly.
Yes, yeah.
Megan, the, I'm sorry, are you, are you done? I didn't interrupt, I'm sorry. You know, the budget that we're evaluating runs from July 1st of this year until June 30th of next year. So, one of the things we have to do as a board is kind of think about this in a more macro way, right? What's the bigger economy going to do, national, state, regional?
Right.
Last night, Ann told us that the collection rate generally has maintained pretty, a pretty consistent level, 99.27%. So, we asked her about, you know, what does she see in the economy? And she kind of thought it was just chugging along. Sometimes a social service function, you know, kind of sees things before anybody else does, right? Unemployment rates may stay the same, wage growth may stay the same, but those may, may be masked. Some are masking other shortfalls in the economy. You made a comment that there was a spike, and that you had eight evictions?
We have eight thus far for this fiscal year. Last fiscal year, we had 14. So, I believe that that's going to increase. A lot of the families come to Bethel from other areas, and they move out faster than they moved in. And there was one gentleman, not this year, but last fiscal year, he was evicted two times in a fiscal year. And, and you know, a responsible adult who.
What's generally?
Are they typically renters, not property owners? So, I don't think I would see them.
There, there are both, there are.
Different, just another slice of data.
Right, right. There are renters and homeowners. We have homeowners in nice affluent neighborhoods that are evicted. The rentals are better because it's just a little tiny unit. But, we've had huge units that, from homeowners. And, you know, it's sad, they, they, some of them have been in their homes for 15 years, 20 years.
Is it anecdotally, is it because of the job loss, because of taxes, because, whether the, I mean?
I haven't had any evictions that I've been involved in that have been from not paying the property taxes. These have all been.
No, 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 I mean, is it because, not, not paying, but I mean, that they couldn't, that they lost their job or that they couldn't?
What's the typical story?
Yeah, that's all, just anecdotally.
You know what, I would say 90% of the people I work with that are getting SNAP benefits, that are utilizing the food pantry, they're getting energy assistance, and just not able to meet the costs of living. And I've had so many people tell me, I just moved into Bethel, and I can't pay my rent. So, I think there's a lot of people that are making rash decisions, spontaneous decisions, to move somewhere. And unfortunately, they're not able to afford it, and the rent is not the only thing that they're not paying for. People come into me all the time with $8,000 electric bills, and, yeah. So, so I, I feel like, just even based on the food pantry, which I'll get into, but I feel that it's getting worse, the economy. I really feel like people are really struggling.
So, you would, if you were to take the information that you have, try to extrapolate, project forward, the trend might be that it's, it's a little tougher for at least a, a segment.
It's a segment because, you know, you're seeing a certain segment. And I know in other segments, it's the opposite of true, so. I mean, I could tell you 10 stories for your dead stories, so.
But what Megan said, that it's also some long-term homeowners who.
Right.
And that maybe gets to, what, was there, yes, bless you, was there a fact pattern behind that? A job loss, medical costs?
The one gentleman that was evicted twice last year, I did not, I, I feel bad because he never came to me. So, I did not know him, but he did, he was a, he owned his own business, sorry.
Self-employed.
He was self-employed. So, so, I don't know, you know, his situation, but he was self-employed. And, and another gentleman is a senior that lives in a senior housing complex that was evicted. That was a recent one. Another gal lived with her mother, and they both didn't work. I don't know how long it had been since they didn't work, and they were renting, and they were evicted. There's a gal that's going to be evicted that lives in those nice condos in Stony Hill. She's known for about a year now that she's going to be evicted. That's one, one of the evictions that's on hold. She works, she's divorced, she just got divorced recently, she has three children, so, it's all different. I don't think it's one specific thing that's occurring. I think it's just situations that people are also living outside their means, you know?
Just one more question I have. Last year fiscal year, officially, year 19, you said there were 17 evictions?
14 evictions.
14.
And there are eight so far. I, I can't, I can only speculate that I would say we'll have about 16 this year because the trend is between Thanksgiving and through the holidays, they pause evictions. They don't evict people during the holidays. So, right before, there are a bunch, and then, you know, I'm sure.
So, remaining four and a half months.
I think I'll probably see another eight evictions.
Is that typical, kind of that little spike in the February, March, April, May, June?
Yes, and there are a lot in October because the marshals serve the papers before.
Holidays.
Before the holidays. I had four, I think it was, right before the holidays, and I wanted to cry.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I don't have any more questions. I'm good.
And I was worried that I wasn't going to have enough. So, that's my thing is, I'm like, evictions is my number one stressor, and I'm so afraid I'm not going to have enough money in my budget. And I'm like.
Well, at that point, then you come before.
I know, but I'm like a precise person, so even if I have money left over somewhere else, I know it can go, but.
Megan, you're, you're trying to foresee a whole year ahead, you know? You don't, you don't have that crystal ball to know what you have. So, it's the best guess that you come up with that there's been 14 in previous years, and that's what you're basing your, your knowledge on. So, maybe this year, you're basing it on 16 coming up. So, you know, we know you do your best.
And we'll be back.
You know, it's not going to come out of your pocket.
No, I know, but it's the like to be, I'm a perfectionist in myself.
We're a lot nicer than we look, actually.
I know, I know, but I have to like her a lot.
All you have to do is ask. They might say no.
But you're saying also the food pantry too, your.
Oh, sorry?
Your food pantry is being utilized, ran of.
Yes, yes.
Is that, that's the reason why you're saying it, the economy relative to your department?
Yes, I could, I just, I'll finish like my, this part of it, and then I, I'll talk about the food pantry, that's okay.
Sure.
Just quickly, so unchanged is dues and education, miles, and the NGOs. That's 400 for dues and education. I'm requesting 200 for mileage and 20,000 for NGOs. And for the Bethel emergency funds, I am decreasing that by $250, I'm asking for 3,000 for that because as I've said in the past, I'm not a Band-Aid social worker. I'm 100% connecting people with community resources so that they could have a prolonged period of time where they enhance their quality of their life. Giving them a gift card once a month is not going to do anything to them, for them, and help them. And people that do come in with those high bills, I'm not able to pay for their bills, for their energy to come back, but I am able to, are you using the food pantry? Do you have energy assistance? Do you rent, are you eligible for the renters rebate? What, do you have insurance? So, I'm able to really meet with them and see what they may be eligible for that will help them ongoing.
So, in 2017, there was $11,000 allocated for that fund? And then it went down dramatically the next year to 3,700. So, is that because of what you just mentioned, and that you decided to, maybe you weren't there in 2017?
I was here, my first year doing a budget was for 2018, 2019, and I requested $6,500. I don't have the one before that, but I, I did decrease it 2019, 2020 to 3,250. And then this year, I'm decreasing it because I haven't used a dime in there. I'm really trying to, if there was a true emergency, yes, but somebody with an $8,000 electric bill that may have been getting part of it paid before, it's not happening with me. They, they need to use the community resources funded by the state and federal government for that purpose.
So, you just have a different strategy then, whatever was going on in 2017?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't let somebody, you know, anybody like suffer, but they need to use the resources because, because most of the time, it is an extremely high energy bill that we cannot cover because we'd have everybody, or rent. So, last year, we did help somebody with rent who had a car accident, and she did not have the money. But every, every month, she's making it on her own. She's self-sufficient, and then, yes, there's a situation that occurs that she needs help. Something like that is appropriate, but somebody that's having months after months and no plan to, it's not an appropriate intervention. But, I do, I feel like I help them, you know, in other ways.
Get other resources.
Yes.
Daleen, in 2017, the bulk of that 11,000 was we had to move somebody to Norwalk because there was electricity, it was court case, someone cut the power to the building. I think the, the actual owner, the residents, cut it to get, rather than the victim, he figured if I cut the power, they're going to have to leave. And then it became a court case, remember that, Matt?
Yep.
And that's, we wound up paying, I think, around $8,000 to move the people. We had, we had to have the apartment in Norwalk inspected before the person can actually move down there. And that was all part of the state law.
Okay, that explains it, thank you.
If that happens, I'll be like, can I please have more money?
Tell us about the food pantry, Megan.
All right, so the food pantry. We have currently 184 households for this fiscal year. Last fiscal year, we had 210. I anticipate this number going up probably to about 225. And there are 100, excuse me, 403 people that make up those households. 94 of them are seniors, 165 are adults between 18 and 59, and 144 are children up to 17 years old. So, I anticipate, I don't know what it was this time last year, I should look, but just last year was 210, and I anticipate that number is definitely going to, to grow.
Megan, I'm sorry.
Yes.
One more time, can you do that distribution?
Sure, 184 households, 140, a total, people that make up, comprise those households is 104. 144 are children from 0 to 17. 165 are adults, 18 to 59, and 94 are seniors, 60 and over.
And this is a separate program from Brotherhood in Action?
Yes, this is, this is for the, I qualify people for the community food pantry. It operates twice a month out of the Methodist Church. And all the people that are on this list, we call three times a year to see if they want the holiday baskets and the summer basket.
So, would you say that these folks also probably are clients of Brotherhood in Action?
Yes, they are, yes, they are. They have to be registered for this through me to be a part of Brotherhood in Action. And also, I would say probably 80% of the people are receiving SNAP benefits, which I also anticipate this number is going to increase with federal changes. The SNAP benefits are decreasing or being removed from, they're, they're no longer eligible.
And Megan, those are all Bethel?
These are all Bethel residents. And then I have an emergency food pantry that they utilize in between, or if there's an emergency, like a power outage or something. And then, like, back to school, we do fun programs, a back to school party, holiday gift giving party. 96 children participated in the back to school backpack supply. 32 children of those went to the back to school party. We had 105 children receiving gifts through the holiday gift giving program. Both those programs are 100% funded by volunteers, donors, so.
And those are all Bethel residents?
All Bethel residents. And they have to qualify for the holiday gift giving program. They do have to verify income and assets. Because I don't want a senior, are there any left, to, to adopt a child? And maybe they have less money in their account than, than somebody that's winning the gift. So, the Easter basket program, same thing. If you're, if you're eligible for the holiday gift giving program, that was 96 children received baskets. And also, we do have the community council of Bethel, and we do receive private monetary donations. So, 17 to 18, we receive $4,900, 18 to 19, $4,600 and change. And so far this year, $4,479. And people may make specific requests, like I wanted to go to a family with a veteran or family with children for the holiday program. So, we use, we utilize that too. And I'm very excited because United Way has been a huge support of us. We still continue to get the Alice Grants. They increase the funding twice a year from 4,000 to 5,000. So, that's 10,000 that we're receiving so children can participate in enrichment programs, any type, an art program, sport program, music, drama, anything. And then also, I did submit three stories, if you read the New York Times, for the holiday giving fund. And all four families were selected. So, we, they funded us $4,710 this holiday season.
Very nice, congratulations.
Yeah, so that is instead of, like, some gal needed, a senior needed a furnace, and instead of like the emergency money, yes, please. And I think that's it. Any questions? Sorry, I'm, I'll be nervous every year.
Thank you, Megan.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
All right, up next, building department. Please welcome Christopher Baldwin, who has completed two point something years with us now, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Two years in December?
Almost three.
Almost three, yeah.
So, I'm Chris Baldwin, I'm the building official for the town. Good evening, everyone. If you look in my request, I'm requesting an increase in the salaries for some part-time help. The reason being is, if you look in there, there's been an increase in what's been coming into the department. And the way the permits are designed, the fees are based on construction value. So, whenever you see an increase in the fees coming into the department, that's an increase in construction value. That's larger projects coming into the building department. And part of the process is, we have to review those documents for code compliance. And as the projects get larger and more complicated, it takes more time and resources on the department. Another thing is, we've got town projects, we have two sizable projects with the schools. Another thing is we've got town projects, we have two sizable projects with the schools. We have Johnson School, Rockwell School, and construction going on there, for which we didn't receive any funding for, because they're town projects. And they also create a strain on the department, so what I'm asking for is an increase so I can hire some part-time help. Um, I want to try and get a part-time inspector that's certified to handle a lot of the residential inspections twice a week. And have some extra clerical help three times a week. So I'm just asking for an increase, and it would all be part-time help till, you know.
What is that dollar value?
It's uh, I think it's an increase of another approximately twenty thousand.
Almost twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
That says part-time help, twenty thousand dollars.
We need to put more detail in that.
It's, just to make sure all the same, the detail suggests forty thousand of part-time help, which is twenty thousand higher.
Right, forty thousand includes the twenty thousand, the last year, twenty thousand from this year.
Yeah.
So that's the majority of the income, there's about twenty-seven thousand total department increase, that's the vast majority.
Right, and it's, it's critical too, because our inspections, we, we maintain the quality of the construction. Also too, with a lot of the town projects, we're ensuring code compliance and a level of, of quality of the projects.
And, and I mean, the total department budget here is two hundred and ninety, but as I mentioned before on the Board of Finance meeting, the permits already have exceeded three hundred and sixty thousand, so it's paid for the entire department.
Uh, I, I wanted to just uh, reiterate something I started with the, the opening statement yesterday. This department has seen a forty-four percent increase in volume on just the permits issued. Uh, they do over seventeen hundred inspections per year, each inspection goes from one to two hours. So any one permit results in multiple inspections. And this is, there are statutory requirements by which they must do their work. You, you can't, um, you, you can't tell somebody who comes in on May first when the weather gets nice that they want to build a garage, well, wait till July and I'll give you your permit. By law, it has to be done. So uh, Chris is requesting the additional money, but he's been getting, we, we've, you know, to the degree that we have, we have supplied some part-time help to keep them, keep them afloat, but this is, this is one of those non-negotiable things. He has to get the work done, and they're, they're drowning in, in work right now, so.
But, but also, he's, he's brought in more than his budget, so I mean, that's a.
Chris, are you doing all the inspections all in-house, or?
No, um, Joseph and myself are doing inspections. And then I have a part-time inspector, he's a retired gentleman who has the certification, you have to be certified by the state to do them. And he has that certification for residential. So what I'm trying to do is offload some of the residential on him, and Joseph and I can concentrate on some of the commercial and so forth.
So there's no one else except you guys in the school system and like the police department?
Right.
You're doing a hundred percent of it?
Right, yep, yep, and then the fire marshal works in conjunction with us.
Oh, it's different departments, I get that, but you're doing the building part of it.
Yeah, exactly.
Chris, just to be clear, when we did the police department, we did bring somebody else in at the beginning of the project.
I thought.
To review the plans.
Yes.
Just a review of the plans and codes and stuff, you're saying?
And, and I think there was a presentation to you, and then you, you have to finalize, you have to approve it.
And it was the same with the schools too. Yep, but we're responsible for.
You're doing a daily inspection, covering up, closing ceilings, yeah.
Yes, all the inspections. And then also too, there's, there are so many inspections that there were called special inspectors. And they'll come in and they'll do specialized inspections for the steel, welding, the bolting, um, all of that type of stuff. And then I receive those reports, and I have to review those reports. If there's deficiencies, I have to follow up on those and, and find out, you know, how are we correcting this? So there's, there's a lot involved, and then as Mr. Mickerback will, there's statutory requirements. I have time, timeframes that I have to complete all the work in. So.
And Chris, I'm just curious, um, a forty thousand dollar amount, how much part-time help does that get you? Is that a thousand dollars?
That's exactly, I, I sat and I really calculated the hours and, and what they would get paid and so forth. That's exactly what I would need for, like I said, having some clerical assistance Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And having a, an inspector all day on a Tuesday and Thursday. And what we try and do is, since he's a residential inspector, we try and coordinate those residential inspections for those days. Obviously, Joseph and myself can do those other inspections too, but I'll be honest with you, just, you can tell by the numbers, we just have a lot of work coming in, and to really serve the community and serve the people in Bethel, we need, we just need that extra help.
But you're covering it with the permit fees anyway, basically?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Self-funding yourself, right?
Yeah.
So it's about forty hours, it sounds like, right? Twenty-four hours of clerical, sixteen hours of inspector.
Yep.
I, I just got a question, does, is that under the guidelines, we don't have to pay the benefits or anything for?
Oh yeah, there's no benefits on that.
It's under the forty hours?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, matter of fact, the retired gentleman that helps out, he doesn't want any benefits, he'll only hurt him. So it, it's kind of a win-win situation for us. Did you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
You have any questions for me, Brad?
Tomorrow morning. We'll talk later.
There's not gonna be a question.
Alright, thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next up is a.
Hi, everybody.
Next up is another department that is suffering from a very rapid growth curve. This is our Health Department, and welcome, uh, Dr. Health, Laura Vassil.
So I thought I opened dot com, everything I could in a bulleted fashion, so you could just X-ray us. And um, the, really the thrust of this is what Chris said. Um, our community is very vibrant and very busy. And you could look at a lot of different data to see what I've shown you online. I've asked for contracted staff, I detailed the hours, their salaries for you, I put it on open dot com. They, um, there are no benefits with any of them, but what they do is all the work that you do is legally required. And I went to the first selectman and I spoke with that town attorney, and I'm concerned because we're not meeting all their inspections, and we can't, with the volumes too high, and um, that's a liability risk. It's not right, but when problems occur, the first thing they look at is, did agencies do it, they're supposed to? Even if it didn't have anything to do with the problem. And so this, I really gave you what I believe will serve us for uh, now and for a couple of years. Um, we are very densely populated, the rental housing is, um, the rental housing complaints take so much time of mind with Attorney Lawler, and then we have, uh, which I put online for you, the, uh, the State of Connecticut put new salon regulations in place. So we have anywhere from thirty-nine to sixty salons. And we, but the good news is, we will be able to bill for that and to cover some costs. So that's what my budget's about. There is some good news in that the work that we did together has been paying off. And um, we have been collecting the best revenues in my time with you. And that's starting to show up and start to pay for some of, some of these legally mandated efforts. And even with the new salons, we are gonna look at how to cover the salary of the contracted person and meet the law at the same time.
Laura, what is your income?
Uh, we, you have it on open dot com.
How, how much is, that you've taken in?
Not, not your personal income, though.
So hang on, I brought a couple of different ways that we looked at it.
Did you include that in the narrative page?
Yes, I did, but just to make it easy.
Yeah.
In one way that we checked, now this is just the work that we do with fees, like Christopher said. So this is on, the only work we get, there's so much we do that there's no fee. But last fiscal year, um, in Bob and Brad's and the Hunt system, it would have been twenty-nine thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars. But then when we looked, uh, before the selectmen looked at me, just from July ni-, uh, July one, twenty nineteen to now, we collected thirty-three thousand. And that's some of those new fees that we've instituted to try to cover the cost of legally mandated work. And I think we can proceed in that. So last year, the Health Department, for just the things that have a fee associated with it, was twenty-nine thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars. And then this year, right now, uh, it's about six months, is about thirty-three thousand.
So you're gonna be close to sixty thousand?
I would love it. And that's just the, that's, because you know that that's only forty percent of our work. Everything else that we do is part of their tax dollars to protect them. Um, and it doesn't have a fee, and I understand, so like Chris said, we actually have been doing, as, I have put so much time in with the schools on so many things that are positive and that are paying in spades. We have to have two temporary food service operations going um, very soon, by March or April. And so that they can allow the contractors to get in and start the construction of the two new kitchens. So we'll have temporary operations running while construction happens on two new kitchens so that they can be signed off and approved by the start of school. So I mean, these timelines are, are really clicked.
So Laura, where, so you're asking for some additional help, is that right?
Yes, the contracted hours people. And I put it in a chart, and then I even listed under three fifty-three-one-three. So I did it a couple ways for you to do it with hours and salaries. Um, so you have a chart in what, in the attachments, but if you just look at three, uh, three fifty-three-one-three contracted services, the lab and courier costs have not changed. The mosquito control that blew up last year is not changing very much. And good thing we do what you've supported me to do. The uh, part-time food inspector's operating now, but she's only hitting fifty percent of the new type of food inspections that the state's mandating, which means I, I have fifty percent that aren't being done. That's twenty-two six eighty.
So would that number cover a hundred percent?
So then, the, then the, what I have is, we're supporting because contracted food inspectors, there's a shortage. We actually brought on a new person at the lowest rate possible, who we're sending onto the town of Bethel for training. That number's, which I spelled out to you, is called contracted food inspector new in training. He's, that would be twenty-six thousand nine fifty. And when you're new, you know.
Laura, that's part-time help, but we're training that person?
Yeah, we have no choice.
It's kind of a mutually, mutually beneficial kind of a relationship, right? They work for us and you're training the person.
See, you can't get trained unless you work for me, it's a penalty. So it's a double-edged sword, and so.
So but once that person is trained, then they can go work for anyone, is that a good deal?
Well, um, I'm gonna, I try to keep it attractive, support them, make it so good to be here that you don't want to. But right now, it's their market.
We, we train them to the table that they can't show too far.
Well, I'd like to. So that, that contracted food person, we have, we uh, cycle between a hundred and twenty-one to a hundred and thirty-four kitchens that must be inspected, alright? And we run just in food, where we should be doing about four sixty-six to like five fifty in inspections on those licensed kitchens. That is, does not count the ninety-six temporary or seasonal food operations that we do per year that also get inspected, so when you, so there's another figure in there, and that is the twenty-four thousand for those other contracted staff. So if I get locked up, like Bob said, with Attorney Lawler on a rental housing issue, which is always one or two that are very critical per year, or coronavirus, this keeps all the legal required inspections being done. That's what, you know, this juggling act that we do. And then the public health technician has been there forever, helps us keep the data so that you can read it and see it. And we're improving that, and the health expert is just in case, you know, it always goes back to you. But in some of these cases, I'd need to brought, bring in someone sophisticated in rental housing or in a toxic hazard, and you get that back, if I don't use it, Bob just takes it back. But it's faster for me to have it there if we need it. And then the lastly, the Bethel V and A figure has been there for a long time at twenty thousand. And I have gone to the Board of Selectmen and told them, and Bob, that I still think it's an asset to have a nursing agency that has a connection to us in case we need them.
So we just pay them twenty thousand to be available to us?
But what, what does that do on terms of notice?
They have to provide a service to the town, and they send us an invoice for what they've done.
And they're a little behind right now.
Out of this, out of this number?
Yeah, years ago, it was just, okay, it used to be forty. Years ago, they just sent them ten thousand dollars a quarter. And it's like, what are you doing?
What are they doing?
And there was no controls over that.
Well, sometimes, uh, when, depending on infectious disease case, uh, if Megan, if something happens with belongings about lice or bedbugs, or if I have um, a public health, uh, medical um, scenario, which we have a couple per year, and Dr. Thomas and I are above, sometimes we'll use our public health nurse, but sometimes we'll use theirs. Because the public health nurse that you pay, and that figure hasn't changed, she's a Bethel resident, we monitor eighty-six uh, infections legally required by law per year, and that's what she does most of the time. So they'll work on, um, sometimes uh, there's a hoarding case with a medical, uh, social component, and they'll come in on it. Uh, some of our scenes, senior housing complexes, sometimes I'm trying to help them, they have a medical problem. And um, it's actually resulting in eviction if we don't get them under control. And sometimes the nurses under Dr. Thomas and I can bring a medical, a nursing aspect to it. But that goes through, the, and they do emergency preparations with us.
So, so that's money that's there, and if it's used, it's used, it's invoiced, and if it's not invoiced, it's not used.
Just put on this account.
They track everything.
If they only give us a bill for the, the course of the year of five thousand, there's fifteen left over.
So we track everything.
And it's variable, so you can't really predict what.
It's very hard, I mean, we try to keep everything under control, but it's, it's, life is stretching us a lot these last few years.
Laura, you mentioned there was a hundred and thirty-six kitchens, but you expect those kitchens four times a year?
Right, or if it's a problem, or they need us to keep their business.
So it's four hun-, it's five hundred inspections you do, not a hundred and thirty-six inspections?
Right, yeah, I, yes, correct. So that's why you see, and with health, like I, you know, with coronavirus or all the different things that I, you're listening to kindly, you know, sometimes, you know, on maybe a seven-day week or, or twenty-four hours, we just don't abuse that because we don't have three shifts, so they don't abuse it. But with the staff, they keep the routinely legally required work being done, so we hit our mark. So we're, they're gonna audit, they've been auditing, um, you know, we do a report every year, we're all certified and licensed, and there's the same review board of the doctors as the review board that I, and then the public health staff would go in front, but we're not going in front of them because we always do it so often, still I do.
More questions?
No.
Well, thank you for all your work, really appreciate it.
Thank you, you were so kind, I don't want to bore you, but I did make happen. You were so good, um, um, the, it's rapidly changing, but this is the latest on coronavirus. And the one thing the United States is doing a remarkable job on right now, is that if you do monitor the CDC link, you can track what I'm doing, every single health officer in the state, I mean, in the United States is, uh, and is working. So, so the CDC link. So, so the CDC link, it's on our website, but if you go there, uh, schools stay with right by my side, that's really what we're doing. So thank you very, very much.
Laura, I heard a report.
Did you put on the internet?
Yes, yes, so they could.
I heard a report earlier today that they're renaming the coronavirus.
They might. I, I, I really, um, until it happens, so many things have changed daily that I, you know, when it goes on the CDC link, there's about the time that we get a notification on our twenty-four-hour phone, and so you will know at that same time.
And I think when the world health, isn't it the World Health Organization that declared the emergency, they did name it something else?
They really did, yeah.
Yeah, it's more detailed or something.
Well, I don't know if it will in this country.
Letters and numbers, yeah.
People refer to this.
It's more like an influence, a letter and number.
It's on the UBS.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
On the IBM computer, AI? Or is there a spread? Well, today it's white. Yeah.
Hello? I'm the twin of the guy sitting over there.
You're the good-looking guy. Much better-looking.
All right, um, good evening, everyone. I'm pleased to present the budget for the Office of the Selectmen. Uh, selectmen's functions include both legislative and executive functions in terms of branches of government. Uh, the two, uh, the three selectmen not only perform, um, uh, executive management functions for the Town of Bethel, but also for the Bethel Public Utilities Commission. Uh, in fact, Richard Paul's input is quite instrumental in making that a successful operation. None of that is reflected in the budget, of course, that's on the utility side. Uh, the first selectman has a variety of managerial and administrative duties. Um, the first selectman, of course, is the chief administrative and chief executive officer of the town. The state refers to that position across the state as the chief elected official, but also functions as the de facto town manager with all the functions that go along with it. Uh, the first selectman is also by law the, uh, voting representative on the Western, on the Council of Governments, the regional entities, also the voting member of the Husetonic Resource Recovery Authority, and also a voting member of the federal municipal planning organization called an NPO. Um, and then on top of that, uh, we, between, between the three of us, we represent, um, our interests with the State of, State of Connecticut Legislature through Connecticut Conference of Municipalities and Council of Small Towns. Um, the budget that you see reflects some increases, uh, this year. Um, and I'm just gonna go through the main drivers. You'll also see on the, in the main page where it says proposed details, there are seven documents uploaded that will give you a lot of, much greater detail. I'm not gonna take you through that because you can read that and probably already looked at it, pretty much. One of those, I'll give, drop you a hint if you haven't looked at it, will show you what I plan to propose to my colleagues when, after these are done, because you'll see that there's a sheet that shows some substantial reductions in the requests. Uh, so, uh, so heads up, that's, uh, that's coming when we're all done with the, with the presentations, uh, starting next week, or the week after, actually. But to go back to the, um, to the main presentation, there's really only two areas of increase that are drivers. One is salaries, a couple of things driving that. One is, um, the Office of Economic Development. Janice Christiane has increased hours. Keep in mind, however, that's not shown here, is that her costs are split fifty-fifty with Economic Development Commission. But she has instituted a very wide variety of new services that have greatly enhanced our ability to attract new commercial accounts to Bethel. Uh, one of them is called fast-track permitting, seeing as how we, uh, do not have yet an online automated permitting system. In order to compete with our neighboring towns, um, she has instituted a plan where she's organized the other departments, and she will personally shepherd through applications and bird dog any problems to try to get permits, uh, in line as fast as possible. This is kind of a common practice with many towns. We were behind the eight ball in not having it, Janice has put that together, and it's been extremely successful. And I think you can ask any of the new restaurants that have opened in the last two years what kind of instrumental help that she's, she's provided in, in really, uh, helping our business community be successful and getting their new businesses up and running. She also is a board, sitting board member on the Chamber of Commerce and participates in, uh, in those activities and is the town liaison to Chamber of Commerce activities. So when we have opportunities to work together, she facilitates all of those activities. So, uh, because of the demands, um, you know, we were talking a little bit about the economy. My, my personal view is that the economy is polarizing. So while Megan is seeing increases in distress, we're also seeing very, very strong economic indicators with, with new businesses, especially new restaurants coming to Bethel. But that's put a lot of, a lot of demand on her department. Another area that has increased hours is, um, benefits, administration. Um, it used to be Wendy's job, when Wendy was the administrator for, for a town hall, it used to be her job to manage all of, it's really kind of an enormous thing on a part-time basis. She was responsible for managing, uh, the, all of the health department, not the health department, but the health insurance contracts and pension benefits. And just to give you an idea of what an enormous job that is, um, there are probably twenty different contracts, labor agreements. We have four labor unions plus some on the Board of Ed's side. So just four on the town side, and I think there are six on the Board of Ed's side that flow through the, the benefits office. And over the years, as those contract change, contracts change, the pension benefits and sometimes the post-retirement health benefits are different with each contract. And we have hundreds of retirees who are being paid out on those things. That has become a far, far too enormous job for any one person to do on a part-time basis. So while I used to have in my office one full-time person, who is now, that, that position is taken by Mrs. Craig, I used to have a part-time position, I've given that up, and I put that over into benefits, and Mary Churchill is our, is our benefits administrator. Uh, she still splits her time with another department. She's not full-time in the first selectman's office, but she is not only, um, taking that over, uh, she also does some work to, to do, uh, input and help with the health department part of the day as well. So, um, those are the major drivers, uh, the hour increases in that department. Um, the other thing I wanted to call to your attention is dues and education. Um, we have upped that up, that because, uh, Mary, the, the long-term plan is for Mary to be in a position to assume, uh, to be qualified and certified to take over the HR function at some point in the future when, um, our loyal and long-serving HR director, Mrs. Kansky, eventually retires. That may not happen till the turn of the next century, because she really loves her job. But Mary has not only taken classes to, to know all the ins and outs of, uh, pension administration, the federal and state legal requirements, but she's also taking classes to, to become a, a fully functional and certified HR director as well. And last but not least, you'll see, um, a little, a little bit of an increase in contracted services. So just, I'll just spill the beans, that's my car. But I, I didn't really get a fancier, I kinda did get a fancier car, but in terms of the total fleet, we're down by one, because this was the public works director's car. Uh, because of the demands of that job, that individual was allowed to have an all-wheel drive, heavier vehicle to get around in the snow. The, uh, the, the base model Chevy that I was driving came up on a lease, so we gave it back and didn't replace it. So I'm using what, what would be the public, public works director's car until such time as we have another public works director. And before you ask, that position has been advertised many times. Uh, this, to my mind, is an indication of how strong the economy is and how much money can be made by certified engineers, PEs, on the private sector side. Uh, in a four-month period, we got exactly two resumes, just two. And neither one of them were even close to taking over that position. So for the time being, that position is being, some functions, not all of it, some functions are being filled part-time by Tom Villa, who was our utilities director. He is a certified engineer. Um, but the long-term plan is to, at some point, when we can find the right person to replace public works director.
Matt, I'm just, I'm curious, when the position was open five or six years ago,
Yeah.
how many resumes were received?
Probably only four or five. And there were, there were more qualified people, um, a couple of them turned it down.
Salaries.
Yeah, they, yeah, they, they turned it down.
Some salary was.
Yeah, PEs, I've got a couple in my family, I'll tell you.
Yeah.
They're expensive, and now we're not getting anybody.
Now, and just to let you know, uh, you know, when you do the benchmarking on this stuff, the public works director, there, there was, I'm, I'm not spilling the beans or talking out of school here, because there was an article about it about three or four months ago in the News Times. The public works director at our neighboring city of Danbury, and admittedly, this is a bigger city, they've got a.
Two hundred plus.
Uh, a hundred and seventy-five thousand base, and the gentleman received a twenty-thousand-dollar bonus. And, um, our public works director left at a salary of a hundred and nine. So they'll, uh, and we have a, we have, you know, we're, we're a smaller town, but we have a pretty active utilities department, um, you know, there, there's a lot going on in here. So, uh, it's, it's an issue, uh, you know, at some point in the future, when we, when, not gonna come back to the Board of Finances and say we need more money for that position until we find somebody who can do the job, but it's, that may happen. I, you know, we're not, we're, we're deliberately posting this job with no salary listed, just saying competitive salary and benefits, just so we don't chase anybody away so we can try to find out where we need to go.
Isn't that something that's normal, to give, um, a twenty-thousand-dollar bonus? Is that normal in government?
Typically not, no.
Not at all about that.
No.
I don't know if I like that.
No, uh, that, that was, in my, in my experience, that's the first time I've ever heard of that position.
Was that a sign-on bonus?
No, no, that gentleman has been there for a good twenty years, I think.
But I wonder if it was performance-based? I wonder if it was.
That's, it doesn't even matter.
It's really right now, supply and demand for PEs.
Yeah.
The military can't even get people because they don't do so well. And then recruit.
Right. So I will, uh, I will leave it at that, and, uh, any questions? Yes.
Yes, sir. I went through your, some of your things. So.
Didn't even look at this.
The adjusted, the adjusted, uh.
Two, three times.
Your recommendation.
Uh, I don't know.
To do a group, with the mine hall, the budgets is gonna be a five or seven.
No, that's the, that's the raw total, that's not mine. Let me, let me tell you what.
Cause it was requested was seventy-nine-two-seven-six. Actual, it looks like you back out the six hundred that you suggested in cuts.
Yeah.
It's seven-eight-six-forty-four.
Yeah, that's.
Bring us a five-point three?
No.
What was this, on what, what a question?
No. No, I can, I can tell you what, if you're just town operating, no, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, pull some executive privilege here and say, I might actually make it lower. You know, I'm, I'm still massaging this thing, plus Bob and Brad are gonna go over revenues, because I wanna give you, by next, by the end of next week, I wanna give you a complete recommendation, both boards, including what, what an estimated mill rate might be. I, you know, so we're, we're still working on the revenue. So I might actually take some of those numbers now, but I can tell you that what I had planned to propose in this, in my initial pass, on town operating only, would be a three-point-seven-eight percent increase. And when you add in the four-sixty account and the debt load, which go on the ballot, then it comes up to four-point-one-eight. But again, that's.
Is that with the capital stuff that, that wishlet?
No. No, although, um, most of the capital, if, the vast majority of capital that we've been reviewing for the last couple of nights, and we'll, we'll see, um, is really structured to go into the, the capital non-recurring account that's in there, which I, I left alone.
So by next week, that I'm not including your cuts, we can get an idea what the total increase to the budget would be if we approved Board of Ed? Not just, no, I just, I'm interested to see, when you take the Board of Ed's increase, you take our increase in debt service, you take our increase in the town side, what's the total increase in spending gonna be? That's what I'm.
Yes, that, 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 probably not next week, but the week after. Well, because, because Bob and Brad are still, we're.
Trying to figure revenue is.
Yeah, the, what, what Izzy gave us on, on assessments, on growth in the grand list, right now looks at, looks to be nine-hundred-and-seventy-thousand increase. But you're also seeing some, you know, some changes in, at the state level. Maybe we'll get a, you know, a few more dollars here and there. I'm not expecting any, any big changes. ECS looks like it will probably be stable. We do have to estimate, you know, because we have new fees in the health department and, and fee restructuring in the building department, those revenues have gone up substantially. Now, that's, it's not gonna bail us out completely, but it's gonna help a lot.
Changes in number.
Yeah, right.
All right. Just to make sure we're on the same page, I think what you were looking at, Brian, right?
That was last year.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Yeah. So, any other questions?
Matt, you said Mary's in this, um.
Yes.
In the salary line for the, okay.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we got twelve left, I'll do them from here.
You have twelve minutes, perfect.
That's fine, treasure. Uh, fifty-five-hundred last year, fifty-five-hundred this year, that's the salary that's, um, um, fixed. Fixed, yeah, exactly. So, any questions? Robert. Finance department, um, the salaries are up four percent, which is a, 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 a total which represents, um, the increase on the, on the purchasing agent. She came in on a road base when we took her over from, um, the town clerk's office, and now she's moved up a step, plus she got her two percent increase, and the rest of us got two percent in the department, but it wound up being about a four percent increase overall for the department. Uh, office expenses are same at six thousand dollars. Dues and education, since she's the purchasing agent, is, is new, she's taking different classes, just like, um, uh, Matt was mentioning about Mary. Um, so that account is up two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Uh, mileage is the same at four hundred, and auditing, uh, that's the outside auditors. There's a two percent increase in that from seventy-one thousand to seventy-three-one-fifty-two.
Is that more auditing, or did they just increase their fees?
What was that?
Is that more auditing, or did they just increase it?
That's just an increase.
But we held them flat, right, last year and the year before as well, or just?
No, it was a little increase too. I mean, he always goes up a couple of points.
Can we get him to commit to getting us the CAFRA like before a certain date?
Get into the.
Have him deliver the CAFRA before.
Well, yeah, I mean, before, between Thanksgiving and Christmas, maybe.
What, that first week in December?
Yeah, you wanna read it for Christmas Eve?
As we travel.
We got it before the end of the year, actually, it was in, and then I gave it to you right afterwards, yeah.
I, I think it's, there's a tremendous amount of information in there, so.
You want a clause in the contract, is that what you're looking for? A little incentive?
A incentive.
We see, we have a meeting, so I'll push him again, yeah? Um, professional services, uh, there's an increase in this account at, uh, on a legal fees from a hundred and sixty to a hundred and ninety thousand. And basically, the reason is, if, if you look over the last five years, the average has been a hundred and eighty-nine-five. The last ten years, a hundred and ninety-two to fifty, and the last fifteen years, about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand four. We have a big court case, um, that'll probably start in March, um, on, um, the old Dorisell property. And so, um, legal bills are starting to come in on that. Um, probably the last couple that came in were around nine or ten thousand dollars a month. I expect with the legal, with the court case, um, wrapping up, it's gonna be substantially bigger. You know, so, um, I put in an additional thirty thousand in for that. Uh, salary, the first line that's there, that's, um, the salary that's mandated by the charter for the, um, town attorney, and then the contract negotiator, although we have twenty thousand in there, uh, we have one contract that will be coming up to dispatches this coming year, and, uh, we're finishing up public works and, um, uh, the police. So what you see there in the prior year, fifty-nine thousand seven-twenty-four, I don't think we're gonna be anywhere near that, and probably somewhere in the area of twenty or a little bit more, uh, when we finish the two contracts and add the dispatches to it. Claim settlement, um, there's a couple of cases of heart and hypertension that we have to pay, which go back, goes back probably like fifteen, twenty years ago, and those are mandated by a, a court decree, and that's basically that account there. Um, probate? Probate, as you know, we are a probate court for Newtown, Reading, Ridgefield, and we allocate the expenses based on the population. The account is overall up about four percent, and the reason for that is, the office expense with the probate court, this, effective this past January, everything had to be e-filed for probate purposes and any other family matters. Then from that, once the attorneys file those applications, they all have to be printed out. So, she's expecting an increase, the court, clerk, an increase in toner, paper, and repairs on the machines. So that's where that's coming from. Data processing, we're up, um-
Hey Bob, I'm sorry, just, it's a nitpicky thing. If it's being e-filed, would you get an offset for postage and the other kind of carrier costs? That'll be eliminated?
Well, yeah, if you look at the, the printing, the codifying, that went from thirteen hundred down to five ninety-one. And then the other expenses went from forty-one ninety-seven to fifty-one forty-two.
Yeah, that's the one, like, office expenses.
The court still has to send out what they need to send out. It's just the submissions by the petitioners that have to be e-filed now, effective this past January. So, there's an additional burden on the court to convert the e-filed applications into hard copies, because they have to be scanned and then stored.
So they still have to do both, is what you're saying?
Yeah. It makes it easier for the practitioners, but harder for the court. Data processing, IT. There's an increase in the salaries, Nick has assumed more and more responsibilities. He's probably doing the work of one and a half employees. Cyber security out there, I mean, he's got all kinds of responsibilities. So, his salary went from sixty-nine to the seventy-four, ninety-three. And then the other increase in that account is on the contracted services, that's up ninety-nine, sixty-two. And the, the big drivers on that are, our MUNIS software went from twenty-seven, two fifty to twenty-nine, four seventy-five. So that's a two thousand, two twenty-eight increase. Google Apps, that's our email service and retention software, went from ten thousand or twelve thousand, three twenty, so that's a twenty-three hundred dollar increase. And then also included in that is software for park and rec, for their dispatching service. Where they'll be able to, Eileen will be able to send out emails to the different members in the Park and Rec, the Parks Department, and tell them, I want you to do this, this, and this. They track their time, and they'll know what their responsibilities are for the entire week. That software is two thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars. So, that basically makes up the, the bulk of, of the increase in that account, going from a hundred and ninety-five to two oh five, five twenty-nine, three twenty-nine. Town insurance. We have workers' comp. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and our budget drivers indicate that workers' comp is gonna be, at this point, up three percent. It may go down, but they recommended us use three percent in the calculation of the budget. The property and liability insurance is flat. So, our number from last year, four seventy-seven, zero, zero, five, is the same this year. And then the fireman's insurance is also the same. That's the term insurance we take out for all the volunteer firemen, Bethel and Stoney there.
Has there been any major workers' comp claims?
We have, not major, a couple of years ago, we were around seven hundred thousand. This year, after six months, we were in the area of about two hundred and forty thousand. So, you know, they, they look at that and say, hey, you know, we can double that number, and you're somewhere in the area of five hundred thousand, close to the seven hundred, two years ago. You know, we went down, and then we came back up. Last year, they gave us a zero rating for the workers' comp, so they, they recommended using a three percent. It may go down when they see a couple more months, but that's what they expect at this point. Boards and commissions, there's a minus one percent reduction in this account. One of the big reductions is the charter revision, went from twelve-five down to five thousand dollars, so that's a seventy-five hundred dollar reduction. But then there's an increase for legal fees, legal notices, in planning and zoning, zoning board of appeals, and inland wet notice. The planning and zoning is a five thousand dollar increase, and the other two are a thousand dollar increase. And that's all predicated because of, they have to put the notices in the paper with the News Times, and the News Times has-
Increased.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, the salaries on that, how, how does that normally run? Are we under the twenty?
You know, if you look back to the actual in eighteen, it's, it's only eleven-six. You know, so, that, that's, that pays any salaries of, of people doing minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, for pension and insurance, or non-employees that are doing those type of minutes. So it depends on the fireman, the meetings during the course of the year. Employee benefits.
I have a quick question, Bob. What are the notices? What, how much is that for, for the notices that you post in the News Times?
How much does it cost? It depends on the size, and what they're posting.
But what's our annual, what's the budget?
Annually.
What's the average you spend?
I would say probably about thirty-five thousand.
Yeah.
That's a heck of a lot of money. I totally get it, I know that's the penny-
Yeah.
Hold on. I know the penny saver went out of business, so, you know, over that. But I know you call the Bethel Gazette a blog, but it is a bona fide publication with a wide reach. I know that the, the charter revision was, was working with language that would, that might be able to expand that definition. And because thirty-five thousand dollars is, it's criminal, I mean, it should not cost that much to notify people. So, I mean, I think we need to look into that.
I agree.
All right.
Twenty nineteen, we paid Hearst Media sixty-two thousand dollars.
Am I sitting here?
In twenty nineteen fiscal year, we paid Hearst Media sixty-two thousand.
Sixty-two?
Some of that could have been public utilities.
We had some-
I know, but you don't, look, I don't know, it just seems wrong.
They should make us all insiders for those reasons.
I mean, the probate court uses the Newtown B, because they, they use, the, the court for Newtown as well.
Sure.
So, so they put it in there, and it's a lot cheaper.
Can't we put a toll on all of our roads for the newspaper deliveries, guys, and then get some of that back?
Mm-hmm.
Shoot out the tires, please, maybe.
Bob, does it have to be print? Does it specify right now that it has to be printed?
I think what it says is a newspaper, or something of circulation, major circulation.
Through every household.
I forget the exact words.
They have not changed it to include, you know, online notifications. I know, because I've been looking at this for years, trying to figure a way. And they, they just legislation hasn't caught up with that.
So that's a state legislation?
Yes.
Yeah.
State, state end charter.
Technology like fax issues.
End charter.
They're about to introduce new technology like fax issues.
Yeah.
Seriously.
All right, employee benefits, FICR, which is Social Security and Medicare. That's up three percent, and it's based on salaries and wages. Salaries and wages go up, so you pay seven points, the town has to pay seven point six five of the total salaries, and the increase would result in a, a three percent increase to the cost of FICR. Hospitalization, you see there, it, it's up about four percent at this point. But at our meeting with the benefits coordinators, not the town, but with the state and also our broker, they recommended a ten percent increase. And ten percent includes the two percent surcharge for Fairfield County. All right, it's a four percent increase over a two-year period. So, what we were able to do is, based on the negotiations that are in place, and the increased revenue we're charging, or the increased premium shares to the employees, we were able to take that ten percent down to four percent. So the increase is a hundred and twenty-six thousand. Otherwise, it would have been two hundred, almost two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, the increase.
Is that the state two-point-oh plan?
Yep.
And they're switching to Anthem?
The what? Yeah, they're switching, yeah, as an administrator, just an administrator. So, United Healthcare is going away, June thirtieth, and Anthem comes in July first.
So Anthem wanted ten percent, and you guys were able to negotiate it down to four?
No, 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 we didn't negotiate any, it wasn't with the medical.
Oh, okay.
All right, we were told to use ten percent. But because we, we had union contracts we're negotiating on, and we increased premium core share, and we are able to move a group into, potentially into the partnership plan, we're able to save money and bring that ten down. We're still gonna pay ten percent more, but we're gonna bring, based on those changes, down to four percent rather than ten percent.
They're sharing some of the costs.
It's internal changes. So, if, if you were paying a premium core share of, on a family policy of fifty-five dollars, you may be paying now seventy-five dollars. And you start to add that up amongst all the employees, well, that's gonna add up to something that you can reduce the increase by. Police pension, the actuary recommended using the exact same number. However, on the employee pension side, there's an increase of one percent, so that's up to seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars. We don't budget for unemployment. The fireman's pension is, at this point, pretty well-funded, so we haven't funded it in a couple of years. And OPEB, if there's any money left over at the end of the year, a couple of years ago, we put a hundred and thirty-six thousand in, the year before that, a hundred and three. So, that's just, if there's extra money available, we put it into the OPEB.
Bob, I'm sorry, what is that?
OPEB is other post-employment benefits. So, based on union contracts, if there's a benefit to an employee after they retire, you have to, you know, we don't have a trust, so we don't have to fund it at this point. But there's gonna be a liability to the town to, to make up that benefit to the employee, like on medical benefits.
So it's there in case we-
Account four hundred, I think, is on the list. But the four hundred is all of the so-called charities, which is in Megan's budget, account two hundred. And that twenty thousand dollars is, after the budget is agreed on and passed, that number is decided, who's gonna wind up receiving a piece of the twenty thousand. And accounts that are in there right now are Mental Health Care, Women's Center, Ability Beyond, Hospice, Bethel Historical Society, New Opportunities, which is Meals on Wheels, Northwest Conservation District, and that's it, those are gonna, so, they vary, they vary from-
Isn't that under Megan's purview, like, she's the one who, yeah, establishes that, okay?
I'm sorry, I'm just, I have a hard time following the numbers. Four hundred's not in open go-
That's not in there. That, because that was transferred over a few years ago to-
See, social services.
Social Services.
Right.
So it's a series of different organizations that send requests in, and then Megan will review them, and based on her knowledge, we'd say, let's give them twenty-five hundred, or give them ten thou, oh, not ten, a thousand dollars or seven hundred and fifty.
That was the prior year we moved it out from this four hundred?
A few years ago, yeah.
Yeah, okay, wait, yeah, sorry.
So are we eliminating Department four hundred?
I know. Four oh five's not on the agenda, so we can do that next week. That's the inter-government agency, CCM, cost, heart bus, sweetie heart bus. But it's not on the agenda, and this is a special meeting, so we just have to skip it.
Oh.
Utilities. Gasoline has gone down from one eighty-seven to one fifty-five. So, last year, unleaded gasoline, we had a contract for two forty-seven. We were able to lock in at one ninety-six, eighty-seven, a couple of weeks ago, two or three weeks ago. And diesel was two sixty-six last year, and we were able to lock in at two oh six, twenty-three. So, the one eighty-seven comes down to one fifty-five. Fuel oil, there isn't many buildings that use oil anymore to heat, everything is on gas. So, we do have some, so we dropped that budget from forty-two, seven, down to twenty thousand dollars. And then you go into utilities, and that's a breakdown of a, a number of different utility types. So the first one's electric, and that's up thirty thousand. And so is natural gas, up thirty thousand. Telephones are flat at a hundred and ten. Aquarium water for the hydrants is up three percent, from seventy-four, four, to seventy-six, seven. Town of Bethel Water Company, hydrants and sprinklers, up from, it's up twenty, uh, two thousand, seven, forty-three, from three oh one to three oh four. And town of Bethel water, and sewer use, from one thirty-eight to one forty-three. So, aquarium's up three percent. The town side's up three point four, which I think we're in the last year of the raises for, and then we'll have the rate review, and then we'll see what happens next year. But that, that's the raise that was indicated in the rate review a few years back, five years ago, I think it was.
Yep, twenty fifteen.
Right, right.
I have a question about the electric. So it says it includes two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the BOA Amoresco lease, so what does that mean?
Well, that's the Amoresco lease, so we have to pay back.
For a certain number of years.
We put in all the energy lining, so it's four point two million dollars. So, that's included in that number, and we pay that amount, the two sixty, twice, well, fifty percent of it, twice a year.
Okay, so if you take that out, so what's the increase in the electric? Because I see the streetlights went up five thousand dollars, so.
Streetlights are, are a five thousand dollar increase.
Yes.
Yeah. What's the increase?
Why? I mean, what's the increase, like, if you take the two hundred and sixty thousand out of-
Well, electric rates have gone up, but the big increase in those two accounts, natural gas and electricity, is thirty thousand dollars apiece for the new indoor track and field facility.
So how, how do we, how do we understand our savings from, you know, all the Amoresco work and the solar farm? How can that be calculated?
You know, actually, it's a question for the Energy Commission, because they're working on that piece. It's very convoluted how, because we have savings from the solar farm that funds the highway garage, which is a savings to the budget, and then some of it goes back out to the grid, and then you're paying for the Amoresco project.
I get it, so it's so intertwined.
The answer is, I don't know.
It's a little bit convoluted, but I'm saying it seems to be a little nebulous, because it sort of wafts from place to place.
You're looking for detail on that, right?
Only because we've invested so much, you know? It just would make sense to know. And I can understand what you're saying, it's sort of this powers this, and this goes to this, but, you know, it's so amorphous, it needs to be some, you know?
We can, we can ask for, for more of a breakdown, because you're right, there's a lot of moving parts. There's the Amoresco thing, we're saving energy with that.
And the solar farm, and you're saying the track, the track, the field now has more power.
That's an estimate, right now.
Sure, I understand that, but I mean, it would be good to just break it down as much as possible.
Sure.
Which would make me feel better.
Well, I think there's plans also to put solar panels on the track and fields.
Correct.
Yeah.
Which will take care of the electricity, following.
So you still have to buy the equipment?
Well, again, I think it would be-
You don't. It's a, it's a third-party power purchase agreement.
Right.
Which is what our solar farm is, we didn't invest in that, there's an entity that runs it.
But this other company is just for the lights in, in all the buildings, it's retrofitted?
What that was, we had a referendum like five years ago, we're almost at the end of that lease, but the deal was, company comes in, they send their engineers in, they, they examine the windows, the, the heating plants, the lights, and they calculate how much money you can save by modernizing all those things. So when you enter a contract, they pay for all that stuff, and then the savings goes to pay off those costs. So for a while, you're kind of breaking even, because your energy usage has dropped, but you're paying off for all the, it's a way to get the improvements done without asking the taxpayers for four point two million dollars to do it. Then when the lease is over with-
That's when you'll see your savings.
That's when you see the saving, then the cost drops.
Like, all the lightings change.
Yeah, these are, these are, they, they look like fluorescent tubes, but they're LEDs.
All right.
And so you know, too, you asked a question about the streetlights. The usage has gone up a little bit, probably due to new lights gone in. This used to be a hundred- This used to be a $100,000 year account, but this was upgraded to LEDs a year before last. So it dropped to 75 and then it's kind of inching up again a little bit. There's still some savings in there long-term.
Okay.
Did we pay for those fixtures?
No.
CLP takes care of that.
Yep.
You're talking about the streetlights, not the streetscapes.
No, no, no.
Not the street, right.
The streetlights on both.
Right, they went around and they refurbished all the-
Sure. But, you know, it's just a $5,000 increase that-
But we're still 20 below what it used to be.
Correct, correct.
Account 420 miscellaneous charges and transfers. The first item in there is contingency, 60,000, just like it's been for just about forever. Wage adjustments, that's the amount of money that, it's up 14%, but that's the amount that represents any retros that we're going to have to pay based on our union contracts once it's settled. So this contract goes back two years right now. And then any potential increase going forward too, for, that was negotiated in those contracts.
Did we carry anything over from last year for the police, the adjustments?
Well, that gets included in here, so if we didn't use it last year, it drops to the fund balance. So like that 287, if it wasn't used, it goes to the fund balance.
Okay.
Town hall expense is an increase there from 30 to 40,000. Pretty much represent what we've been spending. A couple of years ago, it was 51,000 and 42 and then 43. And that's just items that pop up. It's another contingency account pop up around the town hall that are needed to be taken care of.
And the news times?
That's in there too?
The news times is paid out of the, for the town, the general town, news time stuff gets paid out of the account. Well, we have to do public hearing notices and that, so, which is like $20,000 on its own. So that's part of the increase for that account.
And capital not recurring, last year was at 620. We raised it to the 650 that we had used originally last year until it was brought back down to 620. So there's a $30,000 increase in there. And capital equipment, any small items that have to be purchased, 2,500, which is the same as the prior year. And then the last account is debt service, 440. So basically, this is the mortgages that are outstanding. The current debt, without short-term debt, is 4.000, 175.713. And they're listed on the screen there from the bond issue of 2004 down to the 2018 bond interest and principal. That 2018 is the police station and also part of Rockwell Johnson renovations that we had bonded already at that point. Back up to the top line, we have right now 36 million in short-term debt because we just borrowed another 21 million for the renovations. So we'll have interest due come July of 510,000 for the 21 we borrowed, the 15 that was out there and also the 990 that we're paying off. That was authorized back at a town meeting. So the interest calculation on those three numbers would be 510,000. And then also included in the budget is 500,000 for principal on the short-term debt. So the idea is, in a couple of years, when those projects are completed, rather than bond 36 or 40 million, if we could start to pay down a little bit each year, 500 or 750,000, we won't have to bond the full amount. We can bond something less. Now, the interest rates right now, back in July, I mean, January, as I had mentioned, was 1.22. Long-term rates are closer to 2%, two and a quarter. So it's close, but you're still saving a point, you know? So if we can start to bring down the short-term debt, even if it's 2 or 3 million dollars, that's 2 or 3 million less that you got to pay out over a 25-year period, you know, so. So that's the account that that totals last year, the current year that we're in right now is 4.00934 and it moves up to 5.00185.713. And that's the 12 accounts.
Untouchable. Basically, you went over your 12 minutes.
Yeah?
Yeah, double them. Matt, you said you're going to have kind of your number, what you're going to propose.
Yeah.
And then that is no capital equipment on there, right?
No, it's, capital is on the other sheet.
And so we're going to, we're going to work on that budget, okay? And then is this a second question on the ballot?
That's the capital, capital side.
So the percentage has nothing to do with the wish list and then we-
Correct.
Right, it's going to be nothing with the number that Matt can put.
Well, except, except some of these items.
I'm talking about capital, right?
Yeah. Motion to adjourn?
Sure.
A little favor?
Aye.
All right, carry.
Motion to adjourn? I'm moved. Second.
Aye.
All favor? Aye.
That's right.
Wow.
Next meeting is next Thursday.